Do you have already the presentation you're in?
Yes, I got it here.
So we need to just wait somebody join us and I will do the introduction for you. And after that, after your presentation, if somebody have any question, if you are able to respond, that would be great. If not, I can take note of those questions and I can reach out to the people later.
Okay, should I go ahead and share my screen?
And you, of course.
Where are the odds we get no one?
Yeah, sometimes it is ladies, but I hope somebody can join us a little bit later. Probably they can just going for the first one and after that we are the last one. Yeah. And did you reach out to somebody in your neighborhood?
About this? No. I mean, there's really not many people around. I don't know who owns that detention pond.
I just looking to one of the colleagues to see, to help me to find out the owner over there. They supposed to receive the letter.
Yeah, it's weird that somebody owns that. But not like the jurisdiction.
Yeah, but also I think the other people, hi Tracy. How are you? Yeah, I know the other, the area of the location when we are planning to realign the mayor thoroughfare. We need to reach out those people in the south. So they supposed to receive a letter as well.
Yeah, it affects them the most.
Tracy, are you interested to hear about his application?
I'm bouncing around from room.
Going around? I know she's part of our team, Ben. So I make sure, because we don't have any community members attending, so I want to make sure if you want to see the presentation, we are able to do it, or if we're curious.
I've already seen all this stuff. Don't worry about it. I'm just bouncing around room to room to get an idea of what's going on in everyone's presentation.
So well, we have here Ben. He's applying for in representation of the South Belt Commercial. And he's representing Sergio Fernandez, the owner of the land. And they are requesting to do the realignment of the mayor thoroughfare. Brook Road from the proposed Brook Road, south of the Grayson Street, to Eastham Houston Parkway, south on the mayor thoroughfare and freeway. And yeah, so that property is located in precinct two. Council District A is in our jurisdiction with the city of Houston. And he's here.
Thank you. Yeah, I just popped in on this one to see if there was any sort of engagement or interaction with the Beltway Eight access management stuff that I'm working on.
Nobody I were in, I don't know if Ben had the opportunity for engage people this time.
From the Beltway Eight? No.
No, I mean, it's nothing that you would need to worry about. I'm just for my own benefit. I'm, I just wanted to see where this was and what it was all about.
And actually, I think it's great. Yeah. So I assume we have more community members attending. They will be aware that is happening in their neighborhood.
Yeah. So essentially what we have here is this little lot. Triangle lot and the major, the proposed thoroughfare. It cuts right through the middle of it. So it shrinks our buildable area from 14,000 to just a little over 3,000. So the owner really can't do anything with that lot. With the proposed use or with the proposed thoroughfare. And so what we're proposing is just to realign it along the edge of the property line. So that it's, they take 50% or the 50 foot dedication from our lot. It just gives them back a little bit of that buildable area because he's just looking to do like a small warehouse and get some promotional signage for his business on the Beltway. So any kind of square footage that we can gain back would be beneficial.
Thank you.
Super exciting stuff.
Let me, as soon as I saw your request, I think it's very, you know, it's terrible to know that amount of the property can be affected by the owner. They cannot make anything over there, honestly.
Yeah, he really can't. We try to do site plans and it's just no use in even trying to develop it.
The business is plumbing, right? Plumbing company?
Yeah. So it's a plumbing company. It's called Accurate Plumbing. And he had submitted a full set of plans for building. I wasn't the architect on it at the time, but that's when they submitted the plans, that's when they figured out that the thoroughfare was proposed through there.
I see.
I saw Sharon hop in and hop out. I'm gonna hop out too. Good luck with your application and thank you.
Thank you.
She's one of our new team members.
Seems like there's been, well, not recently, but beginning of the year, it seems like there was a lot of new people coming in and out.
Yeah. And we have this year, for example, that is my first year attending one of the applicants. The last year I attended, you know, just listening and trying to learn and understand what is the dynamic of this process. And actually, we have new team members in our team. So yeah. And we have some volunteers and people helping us to handle the different breaker room.
Crazy learning about the process, how long it takes, but the way it works.
And what, that is one of the things that I mentioned to Sharon. So she's leading this project, but at the same time is a kind of overwhelming because you need to handle with the different agency, with the different owners, with the different, you know, council members or it's hard work.
Yeah.
The logistic and trying to pull all the pieces together, training team, helping us because she's helping us in everything, in everything.
So are you just in dealing with major thoroughfares or are you involved with all planning?
I'm the Vision Zero Coordinator at the city of Houston. So actually I'm focused on in the transportation area. We have people in charge of the mayor thoroughfare. We have people in charge of bike lanes or the sidewalk projects or the major projects. And I'm leading the Vision Zero projects in Houston in collaboration with Houston Public Works. So do you know what is Vision Zero? We can talk.
Yeah, no, I don't.
In 2019, the mayor signed an executive order with a commitment to end fatalities and serious injuries by 2030. So that is the Vision Zero Initiative is on a program who birthed in, in Sudan, in Europe. And in 2008, 1994, it started to probably United States say, well, probably we can bring that in our, in our country. So later in 2000, different cities across the nation decide to adopt Vision Zero projects. And here in Texas, in the United States, we have almost 50 cities across the nation with Vision Zero. And in Texas, we have six cities and one in Harris County with Vision Zero projects. So we have the idea, we have the approach, but the four different core, the first one is focused on communication. How we can educate the community members and state representative or, you know, any government agency to know about the trends, number of crashes in Houston, the type of crashes, more of if that, what is the percentage of the pedestrian, the bikers, the drivers? And what is the mode of those crashes? And what are the contributing factors, speeding or impaired drivers or distracted drivers? And learn about the manner of collision and how we can fix that reality. And we have focused on more the engineer side. That is not my side, of course. I'm not planning. I'm not engineer. But that is more that area from Houston Public Works. They are more involved with the engineers, studies and trying to bring all the projects focused on Vision Zero perspective. So we have our high injury network. Who were, identify 400 plus miles of segments that we know at least two or three people died in those segments. And five or six people were serious injuries. That data is from 2014 to 2018. And now probably in a couple of weeks, we are planning to share with the community, the new high injury network is from 2017 to 2022, more updated. And what else? We're trying to be focused on projects on those segments and also in the most vulnerable communities, on the served communities where the minorities are in our city. So we are trying to manage the speed limits. We are planning to control the timing between traffic signs, traffic lights, and also we have the fatalities review board with the police department, health department, Houston Public Works, Metro, and a couple of more agencies, fire department. And we are reviewing some location of the fatalities occur. And we analyze the narrative of those crashes. So we're trying to understand what happened there that day. You know, the time, the condition of the weather or the manner of the collision or what happened and trying to see how we can improve those locations. So that is part of the work. In general.
I'd never thought about people looking into it that deeply.
Yeah. Yeah, for us it's had a big challenge because in imagine, so Houston is so huge. And you cannot fix all the streets at the same time. You cannot fix, you cannot build all the sidewalk that you need. You cannot build all the bike lanes that you need to build to trying to connect people, to trying to keep the area safe or develop some mode of transportation on the served community. So, but we are moving forward. So we launched our action plan in November 2020. So imagine it was in, you know, before pandemic, the pandemic. So we did the first year, the engagement through website, through virtual meetings and was it really hard to spread out the word? But the agencies and the different departments, since the beginning, we are working to incorporate projects on Vision Zero. And yeah, so now we are working on our second annual report. And well, the trends are terrible. 332 people died in our roads the last year.
Now, did you say that's just bikers that you're studying?
It's overall, no, it's overall. Biker drivers and pedestrian or motorcycles.
What's like the leading overall cause or most common cause?
The majority of them are the contributing factor for in general is the speeding. You know, the people they are going over, over, over the speed limit and that that's happened. After the, the second one is impaired drivers. You know, and the third one, we have people with bad behaviors or unsafe maneuvers when they are driving. A couple of them is people were, they are parking in the street because, you know, the car is not working or yeah. And we are in, with Vision Zero, we are focused on city streets. So we are not counting the highways or the farmer markets or another kind of road. Just city X speed that we can fix or bring some projects over there.
Yeah, then that number seems really high if it doesn't include highways or anything like that.
No. No, the number of crashes and fatalities include those, but in our high injury network, the 60% of the crashes occur in the 6% of the city of streets. So it's a concentration of crashes in our, in city streets.
What's the highest, like with the main street?
Well, we have a top of priorities or top segment. We, one of them is Bissonet Corridor. We have telephone road. We have airline. We have the cross timbers. We have a couple of large corridors that we need to build some improvement projects over there.
I live very close to airline and cross timbers.
Say it again?
I live very close to airline and cross timbers, like that intersection.
Okay.
There's just a lot going on in that area.
Yeah. Do you know what is the Vision Zero website? I can just put in the chat. And like this, you can, if you are interested to how you can be involved with those kind of projects in the future, that will be something great. Let's see. In the chat. It's easy. So we are launching campaigns, for example, working with text dot and another agencies like AAA, Matt Houston and police department with impaired drivers. So when is the rodeo time or Super Bowl weekend or any very specific event, we spread out the word through campaigns and we are working now to bring some new partners. Like a bar owners, restaurant owners to helping us to spread out the word during those dates. And also increase the amount of projects with live and Uber. Because normally for the last year with text dot, we get a grant for $20,000 and we were able to provide more than 2,000 treats, free tips for people. But yeah, it was nice. But we are looking to have that campaign for the whole year. It's not only for holidays. It's just more for the whole year, year. Yes, interesting. We have different campaigns and that we are working with the schools. In Aggris Home, Complete Communities, we are with Save Road to School. We are educating kids in bike rodeos, how they need to wear their helmets and use the bike. We doing some workshop with bicycle safety. The last one that I did a couple of weeks ago, 90 kids was there, was excited. Yeah.
I could get that website to work by just Google Vision Zero. Came up with like the city site.
Yeah.
Pulling up the action report.
Okay, that is for the last year. I'm working in the new one with new graphic. And yeah, and so working with Metro, working with Houston Galveston Area Council, working with Harris County, with different projects. So, but in my role is trying to oversee the 50 action is kind of, kind of insane. Now we are working in 44 action at the same time. 20 of them are almost priorities. That's kind of crazy. We launched our coloring and activity book for kids to educate the little ones. And we are working now on some videos for kids as well. And planning to do a presentation with the different school district.
Yeah, it's a lot that goes into it. When they put together reports like this, do you all hire graphic designers in, in-house? Or you have to send it off to put the booklets together?
What report you are talking about? The action plan?
Yeah, I'm looking at the action plan.
Oh, no, the action plan was actually in a, yeah, a contractor. I think the name is Sakura Robinson. The company, Sakura Robinson is one of the the companies who lead different projects and plans with, with city of Houston.
They always look really nice.
Yeah. When you compare, you know, the different cities, for example, Austin, we are working very close with them. And trying to emulate some of their projects with the speed limits or how we can advocate for changes in our city or learning about projects to reduce the, the speed limits in cities or road diets, systems. And those kind of things, more the engineer side.
Yeah, I'm sure these are for more major roads, but those speed pillows they put in our neighborhood, they definitely slow people down.
I live in Coolture. And the speed limit in my street is 45 miles. It's insane.
Yeah.
45 miles is, you can kill so many with that speed.
Surprise, Main Street up in the Heights and by Independence Heights isn't more. People always, I think the speed limit is 35 and people are easily doing 45 down there.
Oh, yeah. Actually, in our last study, because as I mentioned it to you, we have our high injury network overall across the city. And we have like a sort of a small amount of location that we want to be focused on because we know the majority of the crashes and fatalities occur there. And when we are analyzing the, the speed limit is an average of 16 or 20 miles over the speed limit.
16 and 20 over? Wow.
It's a lot.
Ooh, the really red lines. Those must be the bad ones.
Are you looking to our high injury network?
Yeah.
Yeah. And if you click on the left side, you are able to, I think to turn on some layers called social vulnerable index. Like this, you will know where are the most vulnerable communities. And we're trying to focus our attention and efforts in those locations. So it's a combination between the high injury network, the social vulnerable communities, and also top of the top priorities, cities, streets, sorry.
It seems like a lot of the high priority areas would be where a lot of homeless people are.
Yeah, that is the majority of the people. They are on the serve, in sidewalk or, you know, you know, the majority of our, the, the street design looks like a major street. Like having four, five, six lanes and you don't have a median in the middle to protect the pedestrian. Probably those location doesn't have a, you know, crosswalk or traffic lights or traffic signs or speed limit signs. So
So airline?
Airline, yeah. And we have a kind of different projects, different problems over there. But yeah. I used to work for Northland Community for three years and a half with Avenue CDC, probably, you know, that organization, Avenue CDC, it's on a nonprofit focus on housing development. Yeah, and I was leading the the plan for improve the quality of life in that neighborhood. And Infra Saktor was one of the focus. And airline, cross timbers, Fulton, you know, Irvington, Tidwell. Those are leader York. Those are street that, wow. And it's sad because you can, you can see, for example, in the same, I don't know, probably in 10 miles of radio, different schools and they don't have any protection, like probably they are not part of the school zone. So or they don't have stop signs. They don't have any sidewalk for the kids can be safe after or going or leaving the school. This is, it's very sad.
Yeah, and they just walk right out there too. Interesting.
You're very welcome to work with Vision Zero.
Not work with them?
No, that it means working, because one of the things that I just mentioned to our supervisor, so how we can how we can work together with organizations, companies to create this kind of awareness, right? Because probably for you, that would be something interesting like, oh, if we are planning to build any property in this location, I know that is part of, for example, Vision Zero Street. And probably we can work together with the city to trying to keep that area more safer. And it's not only you have your construction and build your sidewalk. It's how you can bring city of Houston and say, look at that, how we can improve this intersection, how we can bring more street lights, how we can be more walkable or those kind of things. So if you know, the majority of the companies that are buying a huge quantity of lands, they are on the served community and they have a lack of any of those kind of services. So having, you know, that point in mind, like that can be a good add for work together. And a combination effort between, you know, the, the private companies and the city.
Yeah, it's usually the tricky part was that, with that is it's always like some kind of extra review process. And so all these developers are always on like the strictest time limits. And so if you're like, oh, we gotta do a three week review for bike lanes or something like that, they just throw it out. And so if you're like, oh, we gotta do a three-week review for bike lanes or something like that, they just throw it out, absolute fit. I was looking to see, I usually go to Houston map viewer just to check all my sites. Is there like a Vision Zero on there? Or?
Yes, um, can you just share your screen like, like you say, can just guy a little bit? Uh, that would be a little bit tricky for me. Okay, so go through um transportation. A little bit up. There we go, and. To, what is Vision Zero there? So Vision Zero needs to be under transportation. Is. Airport team. Metro. There we go, uh-huh, there. So. Exactly, the purple. Those are the segment. Where two or three people died in those segment and four or five people. Were serious injuries in those location from two thousand fourteen to two thousand eighteen. And the purple, um, you know, neighborhoods or lands. Is the social vulnerable index neighborhood. So if you can zoom some areas like a telephone road, Visonet Road or Cross Timber. You know, is. We are matching.
Yeah.
And another very interesting thing is. Downtown. Isn't a huge concentration of our crashes. That is not considered social vulnerable index population. And now we are working with the mayor to try to fix some of the areas. So we are working in thirty intersection now.
Yeah, it's uh, it's crazy that downtown has all these roads.
We are talking about Vision Zero, Charo. I'm just taking advantage, you know.
Well, you know what? This is important information and it's good information, so I'm glad that you have an opportunity to share it with Ben. Uh, so I just wanted to check and make sure all is well. I'm gonna check out and probably go settle down in my final room. Uh, at the end of the meeting, please stop the recording and uh thank you so much for your time.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's crazy. They're all outside the loop, basically, besides where you said, in the um lower end neighborhoods. Or underserved neighborhoods. Can always find something good on these maps.
And now we are planning to, hi, good afternoon, Richard.
Good afternoon. I was trying, this one's way out there, correct?
Is the Borg Road.
Right, but I'm sorry, let me back up. This one is in the ETJ, correct?
ETJ, yeah.
Yeah, then I don't need to, I don't need to bother you.
Of course not, you are not.
I know, but I'm trying to keep, I'm trying to keep up with all the ones that are within the city, so I'll let you go. Thank you.
Of course.
So we just go till seven, right?
Twelve more minutes.
Um, twelve?
Eleven now. But yeah, now we are trying to, uh, we are planning to launch our first dashboard. And we are posting, uh. The first quarter of crashes. And they, they can see the location of the crashes for twenty twenty-three for the first quarter. We cannot connect. Uh, in the middle of time, but we are planning to share quarterly the data, so we are. Ladies, they can, the people they can understand the trends. If we are planning to stop people dying in our roads, we need to do something now.
Yeah, even just, like I said, even just knowing which ones are like the major areas.
Yes.
I was, I would have no idea.
Yeah. Speeding, 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 speeding. Three.
That's why I'm from Louisiana and we would always have, uh. What do they call it? Checkpoints. And when we moved to Houston, we were like, there, we've never run into a checkpoint in Houston. Or even, we don't really see cops on the roads here.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Yeah, that is very interesting. Every single time that somebody mentioned that. We have different, um. Some people, they don't want to see more law enforcement working on traffic safety. And they know, and other people say, well, we need to have something, we need to have somebody to trying to stop those. And the interesting thing is, the police know where those. The majority of those crashes related to impaired drivers occurs. Some of them, they are not living in those locations. So for example, you have a large amount of um people who. Live in another neighborhoods and just. Make a mess, for example, in downtown because they are just having fun in downtown, so. Yeah. In my case, before to move here to United States, I was living in Paris, France for six years. So when I just moved here, like a, okay, wait a minute, we cannot walk here.
Yeah, that's a big culture difference.
Yeah, we cannot walk here, we cannot take metro? What is that? So, yeah. But at the same time is when we are, uh, when I just looking projects like a, um. In midtown or downtown in the main street, for example, when we are trying to have the terrace for the people. Um, as a permanent um projects, like they can have. Um, tables of Thai and the people they can enjoy their coffee or their lunch or whatever. That is something like, okay, just bring me hope, probably we can have in the future. We don't have the same, now we have the bayou. Oh, yeah.
They've made the bayou pretty nice.
It is, that will be, that, that's, and they have a little boat as well. But it's not, you cannot take a tour, like having dinner or something fancy. As a, we can do in Paris, but can words.
It's not quite big enough.
Of course not, yeah. But we have a nice trails. For bike.
Yeah.
You know about there?
Uh, we don't really ride bikes, but we wa- we walk, so we'll go park our cars in the heights and just walk them. And uh, yeah, it's, I did it for probably the first time last year. I was like, wow, these are really nice.
Yeah. I had the opportunity for doing a walk, bike tour. Uh, a couple of weeks ago because we had City of Bellevue, Washington visit us. They are, they want to learn from us some uh community engagement efforts and activities that we are doing and they visit us. And we did a tour in the, in the bayou. And I really enjoyed that, like, okay, so that is something, they will, they will need to know that. Because if you live like me in the, you know, the boundaries, where the bones are. You will never know, Houston can surprise you.
Yeah.
Kind, kind of areas that you can walk. But, you know, I think it's the, the mindset and the culture of the city, the design of the city. That is kind of different.
Yeah, it's just spread out, so it's kind of hard to walk anywhere.
Yeah.
You just get in your pockets, you got your Heights pocket, you got your Montrose pocket, Edo.
Yeah. Now we are working on, um, Washington as well, the Washington Avenue is another hotspot for us.
I could see that. Especially with all the bars down there.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Also, we have four more minutes. Wasn't it really nice to meet you a little bit deeper and show you a little bit of our Vision Zero? It's not part of the idea of this presentation, right? But I think uh just we take advantage for talk about that and um. So, um, I think we, we will have tomorrow and a meeting with the, with the agencies. To talk about your application, to see how they feel about it and. We will be after that presentation more in contact. To be aware how we can move forward some things or ideas or solution or. You know, probably we are just presenting the easy one, it's just real line and.
Right.
Probably the agencies can just shut up with something different, so we don't know, let's see.
When will they uh present that to us or?
I think we have here the calendar. Let me find that document, the process. Um, so we have until, uh, July twenty-seven. For the public hearing and also until September thirty-first. For recommendation from different agencies, so we have a couple of months, more month. But I will keep you posted, don't worry about it. Are two people going back to the main room now? No.
He said go back to the main room bef- so he knows you left. But I don't know if that means, I don't know if that's for us or just for people going in and out of chat rooms.
Yeah, normally.
Do you just, once we leave this room, do we automatically go back to the main room?
Well, the last year we didn't, so the last year we finished each room and that's it. But we can just go into the main room if you want, to make any question over there if you want.
Hang out here three more minutes. Luckily, my office is in my backyard, so I could just walk a couple feet.
I say perfect.
Yeah.
So you finish here and go home?
Yep, been a long day, little fires everywhere.
I know that feeling. Stop the recording. Now here. I think it's almost seven, so wasn't a big pleasure, Ben, and I hope keeping contact.
All right, sounds good. Have a good night.
Bye you too.